To order, go call Carla Pennington Cross.
Dunwin Andrew Franklin.
Karen Franklin.
Hello Danielle Bailey's present. Um, we are going to start with a land acknowledgement, the oral one today. I'm gonna read it. Uh, at present, there are five hundred and seventy-three federally recognized American Indian and Alaskan native tribes and villages. With government-to-government relationships with the US. The citizens of these nations are also citizens of the United States and their languages, cultures, and histories are a part of our shared story. Land acknowledgements help us remember these nations and the ancestors who were stewards of the places where we live. We are mindful of our responsibility to practice good relations with the land and water as elders and ancestors past, present, and emerging have done. As it is Native American Heritage Month, we encourage everyone to learn more and recognize the native people whose ground we inhabit. Who have known these lands and waters as relatives for four millennia. And whose descendants alongside many other tribal nation members remain our host. So for Glendale, we hold this meeting on land that was inhabited by the Potawatomi and Winnebago tribes. Uh, you may stand with pledge of allegiance if you'd like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
Uh, moving on, so equity non-negotiables. Uh, I am just going to remind everybody that these are founding principles of what we do. Uh, and to keep them in mind tonight as we are meeting. And to move on to board norms, I'm going to. What? Yeah, it was, um, that was a, uh, a mistake.
I don't know why.
I'm sorry.
The errand work?
Yeah, it is on, it's actually item four A.
Oh, so it didn't go away?
It was just a glitch on the, it was a glitch online.
Oh, so it's still.
Way to be present.
Oh, I've been, I, I saw, but I thought it. No, I didn't, I didn't see an issue. We weren't doing substance of.
Yeah. So, so just tonight for board nerves, I want something a little bit different. We all know they, they're here, they exist. And the goal of them is to model what we want to see from our leaders, students, staff, and community. So let's keep them in mind. We're gonna be civil, we're gonna be prepared, engaged, collaborative, and self-reflective. At the end of the meeting, I want to do debrief a little differently. I'm just gonna ask each person to share what they think went well during the meeting or, and/or what we could improve upon in future meetings. And try something a little different. Um, and with that, and any discussion or questions on those things? Okay. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Carla and seconded by Ben, or vice versa.
I think Ben, Ben moved.
Okay, Ben moved and Carla seconded, uh, agenda approval. If there is no objection. Uh, the agenda is approved. Okay, moving on to visitor participation. Anybody, anybody? Anyone online?
Is there anyone online?
Is it my husband?
Oh, Jennifer's online. Um, okay. We will move on to the consent agenda contained within the consent agenda is approval of minutes. For several meetings. Um, and approval of the academic and career planning plan that was presented to us at the November first committee of the whole meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
There is a motion to approve the consent agenda in the second. Call a favor, voice vote aye. Aye, motions approved. All right, moving on, we have a presentation from Aramark.
Oh.
So we.
We're doing our new strategy, you gotta pull up to the table.
It'll take a little, you know, good use too, but it'll be good.
Come on over Anthony. You can leave. So, um, Anthony Aramark, uh, from Aramark is, uh, the new food service director, uh, who started in the May of this past year. Um, and so he brought a sampling of some of the options that we offer to students just for, uh, board member and audience participation. So you guys can just see, uh, some of the new items that are on the menu for students. Um, so one of the big changes that happened this year with the food service program is, um, is a five-week rotating cycle of a menu. Um, so it had a lot of different options and then, um, and Anthony can speak more into that piece of it. Uh, one of the other things is we have a student wellness committee, so there's a group of students at the end of each month that just provide feedback on the menu. Um, and just some different things they liked or didn't like. Um, one of the feedback was they wanted more ranch for everything they're doing. Um, and then just how, um, like I think the fruit for the first period lunch was, uh, a little cold, so they just asked it that to be warmed up. And so, um, Anthony was able to take all that feedback and, uh, right away we could see some of the, the feedback being adjusted and, um, uh, taken into consideration, so. Um, he has some water and he can have to do with a sample and.
Sure, I spent a lot of time as server before I was doing this.
So are you the head chef?
So I am, I was a chef in a previous life, um, I was the executive chef at Marquette University for five years. I was a chef for Sunix for six and a half years, uh, opening a bunch of grocery stores and standardizing operations for them.
You really focused on mass production?
High volume, high volume from service operations, um, and coordinating multi-unit locations, things like that. Um, also, there are. Parfaits somewhere, you don't wanna eat it now, you can take it home for breakfast, uh. I don't know how to do anything small because my grandma taught me that if you're cooking, you might as well cook for everybody in that zone. But then the last thing I have here for everybody. So some of the things we've been doing, um, to expand what our offerings are. Are providing hot breakfast, this is an example of what we're giving kids for the hot breakfast. Um, grab and go option so they can get to their class and. The food facility doesn't become disruptive in the first period of the day.
Something cinnamon.
Cinnamon, yes.
Yeah.
So. What's that? So yeah, I was gonna, I was kinda here right here, but you know. So what you guys have on your plate here is two different kinds of flatbreads, one's a barbecue chicken flatbread, and one is a chicken parmesan flatbread. Uh, fried rice option that I left the egg out of, so it's vegetarian in case anybody's vegetarian. Um, and the pot sticker is chicken. Um, and then the other item is a popcorn potato bowl. So what I've really tried to work with Aramark in doing is getting away from chicken patty and bun. Um, and while we do still offer it from time to time, we're really trying to steer people towards a little bit better of a culinary composed meal, which is why we're doing. Popcorn bowls, we're making actual fried rice, we're doing parfaits, uh, where they're really challenging the staff to get a little bit more culinary creative. And compose actual dishes as opposed to just taking two items, wrapping it in foil and putting it on a slider for kids, uh. When I was the executive chef at Marquette University, I saw I could make the best meal. I can make a touffay and jambalaya for a Mardi Gras theme and still watch kids walk right past it and go get fries and hamburgers. So, uh. How do I reach the kids at a younger age? And that's what led me to some modern student attrition and being able to affect diets of kids at a younger age. Um, get them to eat a little bit healthier, uh, we've introduced a lot of whole foods, or excuse me, whole fruits as opposed to just canned items. Um, we're really trying to expand what they're eating and offer them, like I said, different culinary experiences while we're here at lunch. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
I have a question, yeah. Um, so is breakfast, is breakfast always grab and go?
Uh, breakfast is always grab and go, um, it's traditionally, uh, mixture of cereal cups, milk, a fruit offering. Uh, cereal bars, really convenience products that we try to hand off to the kids. One day a week, what I've really tried to do is offer a hot breakfast that started two weeks ago. Um, in an attempt to give them a little bit, once again, better of an, uh, of a food experience as opposed to just the same Golden Brand cups or Cocoa Puff cups every single day. And we're really working, the staff that I have here has really embraced a lot of the things that we've tried to do, um. Unfortunately, a lot of them didn't have proper training, so the focus has been this semester of training them so they can properly execute. And then we worked towards getting that fixed and then expanding our operation, which is kind of the phase that we've really just started in the last two weeks. Um, just like anywhere else on the planet, staffing was always an issue. We finally got to a point where staffing was not an issue, which has allowed me to really work with the teams a little bit more in-depth. To improve their consistency in their offerings, how they're presenting things to. Not just the students that are there, I mean, there's faculty in the building that are seeing what we're doing, making sure we have the correct signage for the kids so that they know what they're getting. Directing and interacting with them properly as they're coming through the food lines, make sure they're taking reversible meals. And touching all of the dietary needs that they, that they should be getting.
Do we have, um, any protein options at breakfast?
What's that?
Any protein options at breakfast?
Um, looking to expand that during the hot offerings, we've spoke about doing the, uh, breakfast sandwich that would have included like an egg patty and the chicken sausage patty. Um, to be able to, once again, give them a little bit of an elevated experience, but we're trying to. Get the hot breakfast up and running correctly before we expand into a little bit more of a composed dish, which is what. Led us to start with more of a convenience product and then expanding into something that we're actually composing ourselves.
I mean, kids ought to go to the car.
How many kids have breakfast?
What's that?
How many kids have breakfast?
So during our Monday through Thursday service, it would be anywhere from eighty-five to approximately ninety-five. The two Fridays that we ran hot breakfast were one fifty and one forty-five respectively.
Is it, is it available to everyone? Yeah, so it's just free for anyone who wants it?
Free for anybody in the building.
Okay.
How, like, what, uh, like fresh vegetable or fresh produce or fresh options would they have at lunch?
So they have an opportunity for any whole fruit, we do a rotation of apples, oranges, bananas, pears. Uh, we offer fresh, uh, fresh cucumber coins, we offer fresh carrot, baby carrots, fresh broccoli's been introduced, uh, we do red pepper strips. Um, once again. Improving consistency in the offering of the staff, if they don't know, they're just hammering away on red peppers with a knife and kids get a jumble of red peppers. Now they're trained properly, they're actually slicing their peppers properly, putting them into consistent cups and offering them the exact same way every single time. So that whether it's. Fourth graders, eighth graders, it's cucumbers, carrots, diced pears, they're all being offered in the same vessel, so it's consistent. They're supposed to be setting up their line the same way so that kids can understand that I go here for my vegetable, I go here for my fruit. It's, uh, something I learned in the grocery business is people are creatures of habit, so you wanna lay out your operation. So that they can best grab whatever they're looking for and be on their way. I mean, I was a kid once, one time ago, um, I knew I wanted to just get my lunch, eat as quick as I couldn't get to recess, so. We try to offer it consistently so that they can get what they're looking for, get through the line, eat and get out with it.
One of the other things is like, we started doing is incorporate that in the hot garden.
Yeah, I was thinking about like a salad bar or something.
So they're just some eat guys and that, you know, if they're acceptable, but so we're just working through some of those.
So.
So as a, I'm just, I'm thinking as a vegetarian, I'm like a high maintenance vegetarian that I'm looking at this and saying, I need carbs all the time if I wasn't given some of those options, but, um. So like a salad bar, so my follow-up question is, um, like how much autonomy do you have in setting the menu and selecting your ingredients? Like are you, because I know you work for Aramark, so I don't understand how the.
So I have a level of. I can tinker a little bit within respect to the budget that I'm provided.
Okay.
Um, we were offering composed salads, like we had a Baja salad that we were offering during, uh, the parent teacher, I forget what it was called, it was before it's. They were the date, yeah, so we offered like a Baja salad, which was like a southwest dressing, lettuce, corn, black beans, tomatoes, cheese. So it was a vegetarian salad option that we were trying to offer the kids, we offered it four times, didn't see a lot of traction on it, so we've subbed it out for. A popcorn chicken salad, trying, trying different things within the same style of food. Based off of the, so I have basically a. Recipe matrix and an operating system that I can plug and play from, uh, when things don't move and we don't see a lot of traction from the students on it. Um, I set up Infinite Campus, which is the operating system for keeping track of everything. Um, I set up the terminals a specific way with, uh, itemized lunch options, so we can do, we can run reports. Uh, after our cycles are over and see exactly how many students took option one, took option two, and took the cold option. So that we can s- see that actual quantified data and then make our, make our decision from there instead of just wondering how many kids took what. So that we're actually, we're using real data that provided the popular items.
Yeah, so I, um, you asked my question about the salad bar, because I know that salad bar was always a very popular option. And I still hear from students about wishing there was like a build your own salad bar, is that an option or is that?
I can look into it, um. I don't want you given it, like, I don't wanna lay back on being new, I've only been in my role in seven months for seven months, so there's some things that I don't know the exact answer to. And I don't wanna say something that I couldn't deliver on right now.
Right.
But I could definitely go up, I have proper channels I can go through to explore those options, um.
So I just wanna post that up, and I don't know if that worked, budget, all the things I haven't thought about, but I know that's been like the one consistent piece of feedback. E- even from students, which surprised me, I did not know the salad bar was so popular. The kids loved being able to go through the salad bar and build their own salads and it was really well-used, wasn't it? I mean. That's what I recall.
Came on board.
Yeah.
It was, um, the salad bar, the salad bar kinda got taken away with the pandemic.
Right.
Um, and so I think it's definitely.
Yeah.
I'm all for it, I mean, I am. Some of the things we've done over the last semester is what we call pop-up events, LTO's limited time offers, so. Uh, and you're vegetarian is, we are offering nachos one day, we decided to run a Chipotle black bean vegetarian nacho. As an option that was different than just your traditional taco meat and nacho cheese. Um, wasn't advertised, it wasn't on Nutrislice, uh, we wanna do stuff like that at middle school level because it creates excitement. It's spontaneous things that we do that keeps my staff on edge and. Seeing kids on reaction when they're coming through line, hey, what's that? That's not on the menu, and you actually got to see that response from kids.
Yeah.
The best thing about being a chef is you know right away whether you did a good job or not. So.
You just see it on their faces.
Yeah, like the comments, um, so. Like I said, is I really embraced a lot of, you know, trying to learn about student attrition with the kids here and for and give them those offerings, so be more than happy to explore that.
And then my other question was more about, I was curious about a student wellness committee. I can't remember if we've heard about it before, I would love to, I don't know if we wanna talk about it today, but I would love to hear more about. How the committee was formed, how participation is determined, who's advising it.
It's not a wellness committee, it's specifically about the lunch.
It's just about, uh. So we're just starting on the ball with the sixteen age and like giving feedback on the menu each month. Um, and then we're gonna work this way, we'll fill more with that, but we just started with a small group of kids right now.
How did you choose them? How did you choose them?
Um, I actually worked with, uh, one of our teachers and she was able to randomly select students from each of the three of them.
Oh, okay. All right. Can I just clarify, Lindsay? I understand the students are randomly selected, but are they representative of a variety of food needs?
It's some of the person that collected from our speech therapist, and so she would want, wanna take sure that she got students from, um. All the different classrooms, different, um. Areas, um, to make sure that they all had a say in being a prisoner, and, um, she even would have. One of our, uh, students from a special class was able to point and like give us something down.
And so we have vegetarians, we have the.
Yeah.
Right, like people.
Kids with allergies.
High maintenance.
Or high maintenance allergy kids, right?
Okay. Great, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah.
I'm gonna nibble at this.
So I was just gonna say some of the things I was looking to expand on in the district, um. Now that I've hopefully got the opportunity to move forward is introducing, uh, smoothies and parfaits with darker greens in them, possibly exploring the top of options with plant-based, um. Varieties, um, once again, I have to speak with my pillars to make sure it fits in the budget, just because I know plant-based, that'd be a little bit more expensive. But if it becomes a pop-up option that we're doing once, I can balance that out somewhere else in a different menu item.
Popular.
Yeah. Uh, I, once again, I have two kids at home, how do I get them to eat healthier? I can't get them to ever eat a piece of kale or spinach. But if I puree it with some bananas and yogurt, I can hide it in that.
Yeah.
They'll eat it all day.
Well, and I was just gonna say, when you say doing a pop-up once, like if you find you have a really popular option and you find maybe there's an option less popular where you're. Throwing away food or there's waste created, I could see the balance being like a slightly more expensive option, but. Our kids are gonna eat it, they love it, so that, so that's good information. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Shannon.
Hey.
I'm gonna nibble for the next two hours.
We should always have.
This is probably gonna get empty by the end of our meeting.
Um, okay, we are moving on to strategic planning.
I want to here and I'll get it in the morning.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to strategic planning, Allison.
All right, so this is part two, we talked about this with you guys when we brought, um, the mission, vision, and pillars. So this was the next, uh, layer of work and I'm, I linked the agenda for the day and I also linked. The additional work in Word docs, so if you look at the mission, vision, commitments. You'll see at the top, the approved mission and vision, and then. The, um, final draft commitment, so those were not completely finished the first day and a half that we worked. So we circled back to those left on that Friday, most recent Friday. Um, one of the things that I just wanted to note overall in the commitments and in the strategic objectives was that. When we started the meeting, I had a chance since last year to debrief with Joe about board feedback. And board feedback on the mission and vision and some of your thoughts, um, around that, so then. We shared that with the entire committee so that they knew what some of the, um. Some of the feedback around what some of the language used and some of those pieces, so I'm hoping that you will see that the committee took, tried to take that into account. As on these next two stages, um, and be a little bit more specific with some of that vocabulary, some of that language. Uh, but the commitments are really, so we're onboarding staff or returning in August, or we're talking, um, as a team in our PLCs, and we're just reminding each other. As adults in the system, this is what we commit to do. So that's really what the commitments are, those are really for staff. Um, so that we can remind ourselves what we've committed to do in this work in order to live up to our mission and vision.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
Because that's the way I was able to understand it was, it's something you use for onboarding, it's also something you use for, like. I wanna say discipline, but like for performance, like when somebody's off the track, it's a way to pull them back in and be like, this is, this is what you need to do. So that was helpful for me to understand that.
So those are the commitments, I don't know, should I pause before we go to the strategic?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so strategic objectives you'll see are connected to the pillars. So the approved pillars were whole child growth and success, which is your teaching and learning pillar. Empowered community, which is your communication and community engagement pillar. Exceptional staff, exceptional leadership, which is everything we need to do to support the staff in our system. And then equitable stewardship, which is kind of like your, um, facilities and the finance pillar. So the work that we did to expand under those was to create those objectives and again. Hoping that you'll see some of your feedback in those as well, as we, you know. Again, spent the whole day, right, coming to consent, sometimes a group of maybe a little bit more than twenty this time, we have a few additional people that were able to join us for the second one. Um, but taking into account some of the feedback that was given at the first meeting when we brought mission, vision, and pillars. So under each of those, you'll see the objectives. And the next step in the process would be then. Joe would work with the admin team to say, okay, here's, here's your fence, like here's your objectives. Now, let's look at what are the specific strategies that fit under those objectives and create that one-year plan and then that extended plan. And that's what would come to the board continually because there'd be a dashboard attached to it, so for example, we said exceptional staff, exceptional leadership, we might say staff engagement survey. Um, student satisfaction survey. Uh, we might say rounding, we might say educator effectiveness, like all the things that we're gonna. Implement as strategies to make sure that we're supporting staff and leadership. And then those are the things we would report out to the board, here's how the survey looked, here's how our evaluation cycle is going. Um, so those are the things that Joe will help the administrative team flush out and then we'll be able to bring. That next level of detail to share with the board as well. We have one, two, three, four, five people, so I don't know if I've missed anything, obviously, they were all part of the committee, so.
Before we get into discussion, we would need a motion. So it's recommended to board approve strategic planning committee, recommended commitments and strategic obje- objectives.
So moved, second.
So it is moved by Carla and seconded by Karen, that the board approved the strategic planning committee, that the management said strategic objectives. And now, before we get into discussion, if any of our, uh, committee members want to just, yeah, could you say your name then?
Yeah, my name is Cheryl Miracle, I'm the band director here at Glen Hills. Um, this previous Friday, we had a staff in service and this was shared with the staff for feedback. And, um, it was interesting to just be along with the other staff, not knowing all the details of the process, but what went into it and definitely an overwhelmingly positive. Um, just comments that were made, um, by staff, knowing that these are all things that we hold. Up as, as non-negotiables as well, things that we need to be committed to as staff. And I think what I heard over and over is just. That a lot of the items are in some districts ideals, but they never actually have any substance and get supported. And so many of the things are already in motion and are definitely priorities for the district, so I think there was a great connection. Between what the committee created and aspirations for the district.
Thank you. Did you want them to say? That's okay, you don't have to, okay, I will move on to the board, uh, questions or comments, we can. Start by, I can give you guys, I mean. Other questions or, let's, let's read, let's read what our questions, comments, anyone wanna start? Wow.
No, I mean, I, I'll, I'll go, but.
You don't have to. I'd love to hear it, but I'd love to hear if you have something.
I'll, I'll, I'll just say what, what I think and.
Great.
It's, you know. Take it however you want, so I mean, I, again, I, I appreciate, appreciate, you know, the work people put into this, I, you know, I think. Some of them are nice, um, and, and fine, but, you know, it would have been nice to see something like. And I, I just wrote down a few ideas where it's like, we commit to holding students to high standards academically and behaviorally. You know, we commit to holding our teachers to high standards through coaching and professional growth, we commit to providing students exceptional instruction and rich curriculum. You know, we commit to inclusion and belonging by ensuring students learn the material. And therefore can actively participate in class, because one of the things that's going to make kids feel included and, you know. Like they belong is understanding the material and, you know, having a grasp of it. I mean, you know, that, an easier example would be like. You know, a fifth grader is probably not gonna play in the eighth grade band because they're just not good enough yet, you know? Um, but once they build those skills, then they can participate in the eighth grade band when they're in eighth grade, right? So that's kind of my feedback against some of the stuff that's, I, some of the, you know, I would leave it out. But I, I think I've kind of said my piece with the mission, vision, and pillars before too.
Thanks, Ben. Um, anyone else?
Okay, I'll go then, because when I went back and looked at these, like after they were created, I literally was like. We made these, like we, we did this, like I read them and I got really excited about them, I thought they, they, they really just. Kind of nailed it for me, um, and so that was like, I like, I was just like, woo, this, these are good, that's how I felt about them. Uh, so I'm excited to see the work go forward.
You know, okay. Well, I'm not hearing any more, um, kind of. Well, I'm not hearing any more, um, conversation, and there is a motion to approve the commitments as well as the objectives, am I saying that right? Right? Five of your objectives. So, um, for strategic objectives, sorry, strategic objectives, it's okay, Karen's better, I'm sure. Um, so all in favor, voice vote, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, the motion is carried, they are approved. Alright, let's keep it moving. Uh, Wisconsin State Education Convention.
So, I just wanted to circle back to this, because it's coming up, and, um, I put a link in there, Ben, you're our delegate. Which, um, I know we'll get to a space where they're gonna send us all of those resolutions, and while bringing those, I'll share those with the board. Once we, once we get that booklet, I'll share it with everybody, so that everybody's a chance to look at it. And we'll allocate some time at a board meeting to everybody to give feedback on the resolution, so that you feel empowered going into, um, is it the downtown, so we'll get here.
Yeah.
Event.
Convention.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
In general, outside of that, I just wanted to see who was interested in going to the convention, because then we would just do a joint registration for everybody. Obviously.
I, I am, but a different school district is, uh, registering me.
That's okay. Let's see what table you set on.
She probably has something on her. There's this little thing.
She would have to navigate PTO usage. And it's up to you if you want us to register you, because it is downtown, so it's kind of nice, because you can even go in and out, it's so close at their session, but look.
Well, so that was, that was kind of, I haven't had a chance to look, but it seemed to be the first time I looked that most of the sessions ended of like, it seemed like they, it doesn't look like there's late evenings.
Right.
Right, so it's during, it literally is during the first.
It'd probably be easier, we will for sure have a report out, um, on this. And we get access to like an app and all the presentations.
Right.
We can share.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
And you could tell, like you could tell me which, if there's one you really want me to go to.
Well, I think the other question I had is, is it possible to register for like, a day? Right, because
Yeah.
It's, I'll have to look at that and see if I can pick a day, and I also have to look at my workload and see if I have.
So either way, we'll get you if it pertains to me.
Thank you.
But it is, it is kind of fun.
So that is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
I think it's like a Tuesday, Wednesday, it was weird, it was like a weird setting of days.
So I, I concur with the or agree that maybe it might be a two-day thing.
It's Wednesday or Friday.
It is, it was.
I don't know, I, I don't know.
One day is, one day is the pre, is it one day like a pre-day, and then the delegate convention is like a separate, like the thing you go to is.
Okay.
And I remember later, I remember.
And where is this again?
It's in downtown, at the Barrett Center.
Oh, that'll be easy.
Right, it's a good time.
So do you two wanna look and let me know if it's certain, a certain.
Yeah, we have a little, yeah.
Okay, I mean, you have to go to them.
Yeah. Yeah, virtual, um, okay, yeah, I'll figure out that time, no, I can, I can take off at least today, I just don't, I don't know if I have free.
It is a lot.
Right.
Yeah, I'm kind of surprised if they scheduled it during workdays.
Yeah, why not Saturday, Sunday?
That lasts here too.
Yeah, I mean, I think they need to be back.
Present or maybe getting paid to. I don't.
So the pre-delegate assembly discussion is actually Tuesday night.
For me, I can do Tuesday night, that's not during the workday.
So if you wanna look at Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and see if there's anything that looks good.
Okay.
Okay, also our art teacher did get artwork sent.
Oh, I'm impressed.
Karen had forwarded an email, and there was a tight timeline, but they were still looking for student art to display at the convention, and she got stuff sent in, so that's.
Oh, wonderful, that's awesome.
I know, they said that they would look into middle school.
Yeah.
Could our drum line go play?
We asked last year, and they're too young.
They said high school, but they'll look at. Cause I know, pushed on and those will let me find.
So good. Okay, great, moving on to approval of financials. Five A, there is a check history, uh, that needs to be agreed. And you have the executive summary of the budget process docs to place as far as.
Oh, it's for the whole thing. Sorry. Do you want? I can give a little bit of an overview to this section, so we have three different things in this section. Um, with the end goal of getting to a product that the board is comfortable with, for the monthly financials, and for a yearly board calendar. So the first thing is just the October financials, and that's in the executive summary, and that's the charts with the numbers. Um, the second thing is the sample template that's got like the pie graphs and all of that. Um, which I've got some preliminary feedback, might be a bit busy, a bit, a bit much. Um, but I just wanted to get feedback on that, if there were pieces of it that you thought were, could be pulled out, that would be helpful. Um, and then the last one's the budget calendar, so that's a little bit different, but the first two, just getting some feedback on like, what are the pieces that you absolutely wanna see every month? And do you prefer, like the chart format, the numbers, do you prefer graphs? Because none of these have to be, are really action items, they're all discussion and input, so that we can just make a better product and bring that.
So.
Are we talking about the dashboard right now?
No, we'll go through one at a time, but the first item of business is a, a motion, is the, a recommendation to approve the check history for for October.
October, that's so moved.
There's a motion and a second to approve the check register report, all in favor, voice vote, aye?
I actually have some questions.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, there is a motion and a second discussion. Yes, actually, I had a question too, thank you for reminding me, oh my god, I'm not thinking of my notes, okay. Go ahead.
Um, so I noticed that we seem to be reimbursing. Yeah.
I was also like, come on, come on.
All of you can be closer.
We gotta fix the key.
Kelly looks fine. I see you.
I noticed, um, there was a series of what looks like cellphone reimbursement fees of like a hundred and sixty dollars, and I'm wondering, would it be cheaper, like what is that, because I'm wondering if it's cheaper for us to just pay for a cellphone?
So that's the reason that we're doing this, I've been rather than the cellphone, just because adding them to the plan was about forty-five dollars more.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah. So in order to add them to the district plan, it would have been an additional forty-five dollars from the eighty dollars. Because the rate that we're on there right now, we're like grandfathered in with a certain rate, and so if we add, and the reason those are on there, they're the ones that take the calls from the community vendors and all those pieces. And to add them to the cellphone plan was an additional forty-five dollars above that.
So here's my other question, and I don't know if this is feasible or not, but for instance, for work, I use Google Voice, and there's no charge at all for that. So, and I don't know that it would be charged, it doesn't get charged to my cellphone plan, because I'm going through Google Voice.
Yep, so we use 3CX, which is, um, like the app that allows me to make outgoing calls, and it doesn't show your
Yeah.
phone number then, it just is, is those, um, but for, um, like Mike and Kevin, they talk so much to outside vendors, and we found that they had a lot of issues with getting the connection.
Yeah.
Through 3CX when they were trying to talk with the plumber or Gilligan, all those pieces, because sometimes it's after hours.
Right.
Um, and then Teresa, the accountant, with the way her office is set up, we can't get a phone to, to get to her desk, and so she's putting that app on the phone, like a personal phone, but she's still using her, her data.
Yeah.
Karen, do you use Google Voice like on your phone?
Yeah.
Oh, that's something I don't.
They, they do that at Nicolay.
Yeah, it's virtual phone, yeah, like, I think the Glendale.
I've done it on my.
Glendale City Hall is like right central or something.
I, I'm not sure, I can look into it though.
I should look at Google Voice too, I've done it on my. I've done it for IEP on my computer.
Virtual phone.
You could look, uh, I would recommend following up with Nicolay, cause I know that, like, for IEP teachers, I communicate with on text.
Okay.
Yeah, I think one of them uses her personal cellphone. But otherwise, it's been through Google, something Google.
I mean, I fully support reimbursing our staff, right, I'm not suggesting we don't, but I'm just wondering, and it's a small part of our budget. It was just one of those repeated bills, and I was like, eh, what is that?
Yeah, yeah, no, I can definitely just.
How many?
Um, I think it was just the four, there was five, I think it was, there were two maintenance, and then the accountant, like I said, with the other piece, and then, um, who was the other one on there?
What did the classroom?
They use the 3CX app, and they have a hard phones that, every classroom has a hard wireless phone, so parents can call them on that phone.
Okay.
Oh, Karen, she's the other one. Cause she has a lot of like phone calls that she gets, and with being a, not full-time in the day here.
My, actually, my question, I'm not sure, see, uh, ninety-five percent group, it's like a ten thousand dollar charge for a fun, a sponsored pilot program, is that a, a one-time charge, is that a recurring charge?
No, it's not a reag, it's a one-time per year, um, Jenica can be, if you wanna follow up with her, typically what it is.
Yeah.
Um, but it's like the.
Yeah, I was just curious about, um, and then just, uh, because I know we're doing two pilot programs. Um, and so, you might not know this now, but what it, what it made me think of in the, in our budget scenario is that, was this something that would have fallen within like the approved twenty-two, twenty-three budget, the instruction category? Or might this be something that would need to be like approved through a budget adjustment or something if it wasn't?
Um, so this would have been coming out of twenty-three, twenty-four curriculum budget. But because it, uh, so when we say, okay, these are the upcoming subscriptions that we know we're gonna need for the upcoming year, uh, we can do it like at the prepaid, so if you know it's going to be coming out of essentially the next upcoming budget, and so this one.
So this would be in the budget we just approved.
Yeah. So she has like Jenica's individual budget line items, she has one that's specifically for software and testing things, so like, um, Dreambox and all of those. So she gives me a list of all of those, and then her budget for teaching and learning, that's that line item.
Oh, okay.
So I always ask her, what are the softwares? And then we know like how many licenses, and then she always gets the quotes, and then we build that in to her.
Do that in like just, like December, January, when you're forming the budget?
Um, it, we can do based off of what the enrollment is at the current time, but then she always gets an updated amount in the spring. Because if we do it too early, we don't know what the upcoming year enrollment will be, and a lot of it is um, specific like number of licenses, so we can try to do a group of.
No, it's good, I, I think this will fall into Act Twenty when we get there. Uh, uh, yeah, but I was just, I just noticed that, so, okay, thank you. Um, okay. I get another.
I don't know.
Any other discussion?
It is kind of interesting how, uh, uh, one of the most widely used curriculum in the US lacked something so important. And so not only did students not get that part of the instruction they needed, we had to pay for the resources to give that.
Well, I just think it'll, when we talk about, uh,
Yeah.
Act Twenty.
Isn't that silly? It's just like, not silly, it's, it's.
No, I, I, it's fair to have questions about it.
I had two more questions, I'm sorry. So frontline technologies, is that a repeated bill, or is that an annual bill?
No, that's an annual bill, that's for the budget model.
Okay, and then securely, is that an annual, I know what, I know what they do, cause I get an email every week.
Um, which, what was.
So that's at the very end of the second page, twenty-seven thousand.
Yep, that's the annual.
Okay. That's good news.
And that's eighth again. No, no, no.
Should be asking this.
For what it's worth, Karen, I did this last fall too, remember me doing this, like interrogating about the check register?
Well, right, cause.
Cause it's just so new and strange and a lot of.
I guess I'm supposed to look at every line item on here. Um, but you will note at the end of a check register that there are fund summaries that are worth noting as well.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sensing no further discussion, correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, uh, so now there is a motion on the table, all in favor of the check report, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And.
Now we're talking about the.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, the reporter, and there's kind of two pieces, Ben, so like there's this one.
Yeah. I didn't think about the dashboard.
Let's go to the sample monthly financial report, let's just, let's talk about that.
Okay.
And I will give, let's do this more orderly, um, we'll start with like a few minutes per person for questions or comments, and then keep going.
I guess I can confirm, I was looking at one first.
Yes, we are looking at that one first, correct? Ben or Andy or?
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I can, for one, two, three and four, uh, for the dashboard, it would, so, okay, proportions are great. But it would be nice to have the raw number underneath, so that way we know the actual, cause like, if, if there's something budgeted that's three hundred thousand dollars, and you know, we're twenty percent over budget, okay, that's not good, but if it's like, you know, four million dollars, you know, and then we're, you know, that's, that's a little bit more significant, so.
Sure.
Um, now, it would just have, I mean, you could literally just put the raw number underneath, what was budgeted. Yeah. Oh, and then with number seven. At least that's what I wrote down, so I'm hoping that's number seven. Are you, uh, also including the Fund Ten transfer in that?
Um, it, it will show up in there in June when we make the transfer, so this is only for expenses that have actually occurred.
So.
But it's not in the.
I mean, how much would that be, like, wouldn't that be millions?
I mean, it can be.
Yeah.
So, but that, I, I think is one of the pieces that we wanna make sure is included enough objective.
Cause, okay, so, so, okay, hang on, I gotta, now I've lost my spot.
And once I correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't it essentially be thirty-three percent of whatever you spent in special ed? It's gonna have to be transferred. Because they, I mean, more than sixty-six percent. Cause we have thirty-three percent reimbursed for special ed, so.
But it's also minus, uh, any local and grants. So if you have your total Fund Twenty-seven expenses, you subtract the thirty-three percent reimbursement that we get, any grants that we get, and any like a local, and then that's where you transfer. So it's not like you, you're taking the, you can't say, oh, this is what it is, ten to twenty-seven, because it's minus.
Would, would it be possible to like, put like a transparent bar on there? Where it would say, this is probably how much we're gonna end up transferring from Fun Time?
Um, I can talk to them and see if we can use based off of what historically we use for local, like grants and stuff like that. I just, like you said, the gray bar just to use it, but
Yeah.
it's hard to know, um, I can try, yeah, I can try, I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
So I had a question. Um, so, if I'm looking at number one, and there's a, a small black triangle or pie piece at the bottom that says negative twenty-three point two-nine percent. I guess I'm a little curious, because to me, twenty-three point two-nine percent would take up a lot more visual space than it does.
Hmm.
So I'm just wondering, like, are we visually representing the proportion?
So what that one's saying is that, uh, and again, this is a sample, this isn't our actual numbers. Um, if this one is saying that we, like, that negative twenty-three is, you went twenty-three percent over your fund map.
She's just saying that the black bar doesn't really look like twenty-six percent.
Because it really should be like in the other direction, like.
I mean, I feel like if it's twenty-three point two-nine percentage, it would take up almost.
It should be a quarter of the way along that.
Right.
Or.
Yeah, it's not, right, like, it should be visually representational.
Like on number four, sixty-five percent, that's, that is about closer to where.
Yeah, that's a better visual.
Yeah. Um, I can ask, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Oh.
It's in the wrong place. It's really just.
I think it's just a speedometer.
Yeah, I think if it's an indicator needle.
Yeah.
Then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ben, I think graph number seven, you were talking about.
I think that was graph number seven, yes.
So, I, I think that.
That's kind, that's kind of.
And I just, I guess that would be my comment, is if we're visually representing things, I need the, I need it to be perfor- proportional representation, right? Like.
I, I, I think for me, you know, how we kind of hash this out and kind of give access, and we talked about some of this, you know, a while back, we tried, you know, at least talking about how we wanted the information presented. I think that the charts are helpful, I think that there's a lot of great information, you know, on, on sample, I think ultimately though, and, and, and this is something I think that also Allison really tried to deploy lately in company document. Like for example, with financials executive summary, I do really appreciate it, I just wanna make sure that we're getting, you know, a good explanation of outliers. Um, or things that, you know, are, are above, I don't, you know, something going to turn over will be, you know, expected it to be historically. I mean, I don't want you to have a write a page on what that might be or why, but, I mean, maybe kind of, you know, eyeball and said, look, I mean, it's ten percent more, you know, this didn't happen last month, or it doesn't happen this month, yeah, just kind of clue us in, and I think that what I'd like to see, and I'd like to be able to think about is, um, and getting a sense of that strategic, uh, financial planning, and, and, and how we might respond to something, so. The verbiage for me ultimately is really, really helpful, and it puts it out there. I like the diagrams a lot, I like being able to see where we are in snapshot, and I like having more information. Uh, and. Uh, and and I think that we've got, you know, certainly this one, a starting point uh for that, so.
Um, can I add one to you? So one of the other pieces that comes with this uh report with the dashboard is it. Uh, because when I push the data forecast five, um, it will have all those items. So it generates like a narrative to me of, hey, in this month, you had higher expenses than me. So I can take the pieces from that narrative to really give you the detail in an exact summary. Because I'll have all of that in the report from what like they'll give me the graph, but then it gives me a narrative and I can take those. That narrative and make it into the exact summary, so it really gives you the highlights of what uh letting some of the outliers that maybe occurred in that month.
I. And yeah, I wanna look forward and 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 not be old into this, but I suppose since we just dealt with the budget for this year. I I just wanna ask, is it possible that, you know, whatever uh tweaks may when we adopt the format? That we're able to kind of go back and do a quick summary in, you know, July uh through October. Just that we have a complete set and and, you know, to kind of compare it along the way.
Um, okay, I have. Some thoughts. So my understanding of this chart is that you don't create this, someone else creates this and it takes three to four days. Right? That is problematic for me because it means I I just, I feel like information we get monthly. Should be, I I like this and I think it it's a good document to have. To me, it's a forecasting, it's not a picture. I think some of the ads you had, it's not a good, for me, it's not clear enough, like what the questions I wanna know are, I think, sorry, okay. It's not a good, like, I wanna know, like, wh- where are we right now and and have that be like our focus every month. And I think the forecasting is good and fine and it supplements and some of it's in here. But I think it could be simpler, easier, I don't know. When I think of the questions that I want answered every month, it's like, what are our variances this month? What are the projections for revenue at first and expenditure? Um, and then review our forecasting for our cash flow. Um, and then I think you got it to spend with yours, but like year to date compared with projected year to date, right? Um, our expenditures by month, so that like, I think we'll start getting there. Um. And we've talked about doing like a walkthrough of our spending at our next cow and a walkthrough of funds for last year, just to have a better understanding. And that will help us to just, that will inform some of this and make this maybe more accessible to me, but I feel like this is. The way it's presented, it's like, it's a forecast, I mean, it's a forecasting tool, right? So to me, it's not quite there. A narrative will help, but as long as we're keeping an eye on. Being in the moment with our funds too and being able to flag, you know, like if there's a significant variance, so we can talk about it. Or increase or decrease, you know, surprise savings, yay, surprise expenses, uh, right? So like just that kind of thing is more. Um, would it be helpful?
Helpful to, I can believe you can stagger the date, so that rather than being the.
So the reason that I was gonna say that the two or three days doesn't really, isn't really significant is that when we have a board meeting on November fifteenth, your budget report's October. Do you know what I'm saying?
When I asked if you could do this for this month, you said, we don't have enough time, it takes three to four days.
Because um. We had to send it to him, he just needed to know ahead of time to put it into the system.
We, so so my Lindy doesn't create this.
Yes, so I I take a report that gets pushed out to forecast five. And then they take the information and create the graphs and.
Who's forecast five? They made that?
Yeah, what?
They made that?
It's a forecasting, yeah, so we have, so it's it's normal. I actually talked to someone around like, you have somebody who helps you, yeah.
I could make that free, free.
But the timeline should be okay, because each month will bring it, it's gonna be for the previous month.
Okay, we we got off going.
Do you know what I mean? Like, we're November, we're looking at October.
I guess my ask is like, I like this, it's okay, it's good. I I feel like.
I'm wondering.
Yeah, but some of that more, it's like, I want. I don't know. Okay, I'm gonna let Karen know.
Where do you, where do you uh like put all your function codes and object? So it's not Excel, but you.
No, 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 it's all in Skyward, because then when we check on, we do payroll, everything hits the expenses in Skyward.
Okay.
So what, like, FiveG has the perks they offer those, like, the the visuals. But that's not the sole intent purpose, but they're doing is they're looking at what, like, it's Baird does the same thing is FiveG. Is is you're you're taking all the data of all the expenses and everything that occurred in that month.
Yeah.
And that's when they can take and utilize the projections to find out those pieces, but then also looking at. Um, projection, what your current expenses are and the amount of. scenarios and just different things they can do once they have their data is really helpful.
So is that what you get or do you get more, you're just trying to?
So I get quite a bit more, but this is like a lot of districts use this for boards because it gives them the information that most boards want. Like, you can have something that is far more in depth, um, but it just depends on what we need or want.
Does it cost money?
No, it's all part of the annual fee that you pay.
Got it. Cuz it's, yeah, I mean. If you, if there are other things you wanna show, I can.
No, I mean, I I know how to make those graphs. It's kind of like the Excel table I made in the exact summary, you're just taking that and saying, make a graph. So that's just a a part of the software, but that's not the intent of the software.
Carla, so I already, as you know, sent you guys detailed, extremely detailed and lengthy feedback on that stuff, so I won't. You've got it all, um, and I had lots and lots of thoughts, but I love this as a dashboard that would be transparent. I like a visual like this that could go up on our website and that would be archived so that members of our community can go in. And so that's why I like this.
Yeah.
As you know, I I have a little bit, I think the, what do you call this, the half moon thingies are a little bit confusing, but it may be because the. The. What I like about this is if I, if I can understand the arrows. It's gonna tell us when we're approaching peak. So this, this solves the problem of like the the oh shit factor, right? Like, oh, it's only April and we're almost out of money in this fund or whatever it is. So I think this visual will be really, really helpful for just sort of dumbing it down to where I can observe it. And putting us all on the same page and knowing where we're going. So I appreciate that, but you already know, like, specific concerns I have for this. For me, as you know, I actually got the most information out of the small charts. That you made and for me, my ideal to help me process and everyone is different. Which is why this visual is nice, is to have two tables, right? One, which is the fund expenditures and balances and the, that's like the technical accounting. And then the other, which is like, you you know, and I've I've told you guys, I I have drawings, which I will share with you. The other, which is like expenditures in a way that makes sense to non-accountants, right? Curriculum, operations, whatever, so that I would be able to put those together. Anetically, the numbers, the my bottom bottom match, right? It's a little internal and I can sit those down and I can process that and be like, okay. Here's the over under, here's where we're looking good, here's where we're, you know, so. That's what I'm hoping that I could give. I don't know, but that's not a pretty widget. This is a pretty widget for our community, so I I like this.
You like the breakdown in number five on the dashboard?
Um.
Like, so you have like the one that had an exact summary and then.
As a community widget, sure. For me, I, as you know, like I said, I I'm not sure what's the point of highlighting the top ten other than. For the board, we should already know what our big expenditures are, but I guess for community, like if I was trying to figure out. Hey, what's my kid's school's spending money on? This, I I guess this would be helpful for me to know where our money's going. So when I first look at this, I'm like, oh, that's the kind of the top ten, but if I take off my board hat, I put on like, I'm dipping in. Like a K four parent is like, oh, I'm to the list. This would probably be really helpful.
And there there is one thing, I just, I mean, I wanted to kind of stress like how I always look at things and. I I don't think that it'd be asking too much, but I would really love it to just see. And we can compare like October of let's say this year to October of last year, because I think that having additional information. Not to see where we are in the course of the year, but how we compare to it. Within the month and then, you know. Have on the table, like, right?
Yeah, that was very helpful.
But with it, yeah, it was. I mean, that that's kind of I would get, this is like, when I look at my electric bill, I always wanna know why the hell was this not. Better or worse. And I think that that's a good tool to help people track and, you know, the information that you put into. Uh, the uh uh the financial uh with check budget, well, same document, I think, twice, um. I like that a lot.
I I guess my my takeaway is I feel like, should we just move forward here and vote? Like, having like a graph like that in the exact summary with the detail and the narrative of like the outliers and everything. And then you have also this one that we're posting on the website and um it's more of a community uh tool or source to look at.
And it's still a forecasting tool for you, right? You've said that this visual is helpful for you?
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
I mean, I I use the one that's much more in depth, but.
Right, right.
Can you add to like what to Ben's point, numbers under like one, two, and four?
I'll have to talk to him.
Cuz I had the same feedback that I wanted the nominal figures, so the percentages.
So if we're, if I do that in the in the exact summary, you would you still want it in the dashboard?
Yes, and I'd like to see how you incorporate the narrative from this part too, kind of.
And of course, it's hard because we don't know what the objects will be. Now, going into what I already said, until we know what the objects are, it's hard to.
Yeah.
But you can change that, right?
Yes, and it's one of the other things that I'm working with Karen and and doing is on the website, having kind of like a finance one-on-one tab. So that it's a tool for people to know what are all the funds and then a very like brief overview of like what the objects and the functions are. Because really like what are their timing structures, but just making it a very like simple way to understand, like, I see this, what does that mean? Not going into the weeds of it, but.
And I think as soon as you use the word object, there's a ton of people like me who are gonna be like.
There were so many words I made her to know.
No objects, yeah, but thi- this is helpful. This is like significant progress and I appreciate.
Yeah. Hope you need are getting there, so thank you. Um, okay, that was just discussion. I don't hear anymore.
I feel like we opened up on one, we opened up to talk about one particular thing. Oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 I that's right. Yep, that's right, I was going. Uh, so next we have a budget calendar.
So we did get some initial feedback on this already too, but I think it's just going to be really like simplifying it.
But I'm talking to us about what you wanna change.
So first of all, whatever we decide on the budget calendar, we'll go on the board. So it'll it'll be in bright places. Um, but just some of the feedback was instead of trying to like denote. If this is gonna be at a board meeting to just under the who's responsible or leads or whatever we wanna call that column. To just have the district staff in the board and then just in school board whenever it's something that'll officially come to the board. Um, I thought the why do we do it was cool, but we got some feedback, we got some feedback to the contrary, so I'm not sure. I thought there were a whole bunch of what do we do? There were a bunch of whats in the whys, and so it felt like another what list. That was what I felt very strongly about this. If you go through and look, there's a bunch of whats in the whys. So we can comb through. One column.
Yeah.
Incorporates those two.
We talked about target dates.
Yeah, so once we have, um, once we like tighten this up a little bit, just put instead of putting October, just put our actual board meeting dates in there. Um, so that it's super obvious. Yeah, and then like maybe after April, just put TVD and then what you guys establish the next meeting dates.
Yeah, so I I shared with you guys Nicolae's, um, and I, I think Carl also shares. And I can share those with you guys as well, but like, I think you probably can't see from here, but like Walatosa has this more of like streamlined checklist. And, oh, you have, yeah, 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 pass this.
It's like a checklist.
And it, and I like how Nicolae does this as well on this, right, like I was responsible and in one column you just see who are all the parties involved. It's not like this person does that, 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 it's like, it's gonna go through there. I like the descriptions to be more action oriented, like this is what we're doing. Board votes, someone's updating, whatever. I I like that better. Um, the the thing I want to add into here. And I haven't looked at. Um, is that I want more collaboration in this calendar with board and admin team. So what I like about Nicolae's is I like that there's a budget workshop with the board where they talk about, did you have, did you add that? I'm so sorry if you added it since I, like.
Oh, the school finance one-on-one or something.
No, 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 like so on Nicolae, it's like, there's a budget workshop where where like, in this case, I would imagine. Like another meeting? Okay, okay, sorry. Um, it's a like a budget workshop where Lindsay's gonna talk to us about the assumptions she's making. And budget planning, like, so that it's like a couple more touches in there, there's another one.
But it's more feedback than training, right? When you could workshop, I tend to think, oh, it's training. But it sounds like you're describing more like a information exchange.
A little bit, yeah, I mean, I wanna um initial discussion of budget planning process, like, so in February, like, toasted it too. Initial discussion of budget planning process. Nicolae does it around then too, looking at budget assumptions and budget planning, just like. I want the board to have more touches on what you're doing. We're working on getting the financial piece, I think, like to us monthly and information we want. It's like, I also wanna understand. Where you are at in the planning process and giving us some more insight so that, especially as we look to onboard new members too. Like that educational piece, like just continuing to loop into that is gonna be important. I can't remember what.
Refinement of priorities based on needs assessment.
Got it, I have something to say though.
Okay, can I? Make sure I, I know I'm being a little, um, there were two, there were two points that I really liked on Nicolae's where they 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 touch. Base and it's like a. Oh, thank you. I was like, no, no, thank you. Okay, I can, I can follow up with you on that. I told you that, right? I'm just, I wanted to say it again. I don't see them on here, so, yeah.
My, my, my opinion is that given our certain current situation, we need to have a finance committee. And I think a finance committee should be involved at least monthly in developing some of these steps. Uh, just as, you know, for ideas, for information, so that there's a better understanding of what's going on. Because what happened, you know, what was a bit of a shock and also it's, it's, you know, it's. Not a good situation to be in, so I ju- I just think it's. It would be a good idea to to incorporate a finance committee uh in this calendar.
I think.
In the calendar, what do you mean?
Like they are a contrib- contributing uh.
Who would the finance committee be prized in?
Uh, that honestly, it doesn't matter, it could be all five of us, it could be two of us or three of us.
So, uh, well, okay, one idea is we can throw this to future agenda and if we want it to be on, we can, we can talk about it. Future meeting events noticed, right?
But this has to do with the budget calendar.
I guess I would say, here's, here's what I think. I think that. We are working on the budget calendar right now with a focus on this. We are working on a monthly report. I don't think the, I don't think that had we had a finance committee throughout the year. That this would have been, there would have been like a.
Different outcome.
A different outcome.
I think there would have been, cuz I think uh more pe- people would have been more informed about it.
Ben, do you think it would be like if some of these meetings that we include in the calendar just become like a special board meeting? So that it's outside?
Well, they say, I don't, I don't wanna say, like, I don't. That's what I'm saying, we're.
Yeah.
We, if if someone's on a finance committee, then they knowingly are committing to.
Yeah.
Those meetings versus if we pull, if we do a special board meeting every month, I I I would feel better about having a finance.
And the only reason I ask is cuz I felt like when we had the committee structure, it was challenging in some ways because only two people were there.
Yeah.
And so then we had to come back and like make sure the entire board understood it anyways, so feels like we could just do. Maybe a special board meeting, have a trimester addition, you know what I mean?
Idea of like workshop, does that, the idea of adding those touches in the calendar of having like. The business director and the board meet to talk about budget planning, budget assumptions, et cetera, et cetera, like. I think we are building those things in and every meeting between now and forever, it feels like. We are going to be touching the budget and finances in a meaningful way, right, Lindsay? The budget and finances in a meaningful way, right, Lindsay? Yep, you're so good.
I I.
For example, at Cal, next into our next Cal meeting, I've asked to have them do like a walkthrough of twenty-two, twenty-three spending.
Yeah.
And a walkthrough of funds, so that, I mean, as a whole committee, when we're all there, we're going to function as a finance committee with a focus on it.
But if you have a finance committee meeting to talk about the finances of the district, that's the sole focus. I think we need that, especially given our current situation.
So, can I?
Yeah.
Can I, so my view on this is that that would be a mistake if it's a subset. Of the board, we all need to be participating in these conversations and all you're really saying is you wanna have more special. Cause I don't think it's, given how important this is and how much, yeah, five of us care, I will not delegate. To two members of the board to have intense discussion about finance and then bring it back to the board in summary, I wanna participate in that. And I don't, I personally don't feel the need to have this. Special finance committee unless, unless, and I say this only because. We're talking about it, not because I want it, the only way it would be meaningful and value added to me is if it was like an ad hoc committee. That was made up of the board plus specific community members with expertise in budget. You can participate and add value, that would be meaningful to me because it's not just. You know, like creating more meetings for board members, right? See what I'm saying?
District does that, but it's a different.
Yeah.
Raised differently, but it is to address the budget crisis that they are facing.
Right.
Uh, and to and to brainstorm ways and bring their reports and findings back to the board.
So it hits a lot of metrics for me, community engagement, participation, buy-in, um, and it's also gonna. Put the fire to our feet to show up when we know committee members are dedicating their time, so.
Yeah.
I guess someone could drag me to the river for something like that, I would drink unwillingly. But I'm definitely not interested in like the only subset of us having.
Well, I mean. A subset can be the entire set.
And what you're gonna be saying is can we have a cow meeting? Which might be something we need to do.
Yeah, yeah, so what what I am saying is we should have something called the finance committee. And we should meet once a month, and I said, we can have anywhere two to five board members join or be on it.
Three meetings a month, you can commit to, okay. But my concern is we are talking about something that hasn't been noticed.
Well, we're talking about the budget calendar.
Yeah, I think it would be better there, but we still can't substantively deliberate, so if we wanna talk about it, we can bring it to Cal. We can have an agenda item to talk about what we want, like do we wanna create a finance committee, a task force, whatever it is to, yeah.
Well, there's also discussion, and just to be clear, there's also discussion going on with other organizations right now, which would inform how we would. You know, shape this document, so I use this document as a starting point.
Yeah, it is.
To then, well, I wanna give just a little bit of history, right, so, um. When I became president in two thousand seventeen, we had been in individual committees. And my hope had been that by having committee of the whole, that we would actually be able to, with a young board. That we'd actually be able to have something of a budget school, and the idea was something like how, you know, we've done things in Nicolae, something like how we've talked now and. And the consultations that that are going on, that we'd have a forum where we could. Really just go to school on what the budget process is and we maybe incorporate that into uh, the retreat. You know, uh, on an annual, and have a big part of the retreat, I think we're talking about substance, uh, and I think substance should dictate or reform, so. Whether it's a month or quarterly, whatever, it ought to be, you know, a board and body. Um, frankly, I want public to be involved, but. Gotta be careful what we're delegating for board members' perspective policy, that's my only caveat of that. Obviously, everything should be open, we should get people's input, but you know, we're the board. But I do think that there's value having a committee of the whole for finance or finance committee of the whole. However you wanna call it, monthly, quarterly, what have you, there's a lot of it or something like that, so I think that these, you know, are good ideas. Uh, my thought is, uh, there's been some work going into sending documents that's here for us today. I think that we ought to adopt it as our starting point, we're going to be getting more information, uh, I believe as of uh, maybe the whole. And so there may be tweaks to this to maybe tweak how we do the process, or we may get other recommendations. In the next month or so, right, um, I I don't want we can do that, we will be actively deliberating. And so I. I I agree that we ought to have a, it, cause the problem with the justice committee of the whole is, what people always told me and you, we had this discussion. When uh, Tameka was president, he had, and you and I also had a discussion before. You know, do you go to a committee of the whole or do you have individual committees? And the problem I always had with individual committees, like what Carla's saying actually, which is you're delegating knowledge to other, by the board members. And 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 that's why for me, instinctively committee of the whole makes more sense. But it's gotta be done right, we gotta get that information, we have to separate out topics and, you know, have a separate budget. And finance discussion, I think that's something we can discuss, I don't think that's something we have to discuss today. As I, I think that will continue there, or some very specific steps in the right direction, we still got the information. So, uh, you know, I I think that we talked about the future agenda items, uh, but as well, we have here, I think we oughta. Uh, act on uh, what's been presented to us because while I suspect there may be changes this and or what we do. In budget process, uh, it's good to kind of plan to be in have it at certain.
But is this ready or about today?
So we don't have to take action on this yet, um. I think there's been enough substantive feedback, I would propose we, we could just discuss it today, I'm bringing it.
I I don't need to make a a a motion, but I I would ask that, you know, then. In such a time before January, when this would start, right? Uh, that that we do have action on it, that we plan for.
Yeah, I think December Cal is gonna be a pretty heavy, financial, financially focused.
So that would be a good time to bring this back and.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, can I add one last comment?
Yeah.
Just um, to stress again how important I I think it is, again, I've already shared in great detail my thoughts, but. I think it's, it's really, really important to have target dates. Um, that are very specific, not just to board meetings, but like internally for you.
Yeah.
What those gateposts are that you wanna pass, and I. I just think this is so important for reducing stress. It feels like more stress to add target dates, but what it does is it helps you chunk out the work. And you know, know that you need to get through these trap, these trap doors, it's how my, my brother's who's the supply chain. Crazy guy is always telling me, you gotta chunk out the work and like. Give yourself the gatepost you need to pass along the way and it actually is gonna make it a lot easier and keep you on track. And it it's a lot like having this budget meter, right, you're just gonna kinda know where you are, and it's also gonna help us as a board kind of. Um, not just oversee, but also have an opportunity to acknowledge the work that you're doing. Right, cause you might be doing three, four months work and without that that kind of target dates along the way and chunked into tasks, we don't necessarily. Recognize all the hard work you're doing, so I think it's, it's both accountability and a way to. Um, shine a positive light on work you're doing. So I would encourage you to try to stick as many firm dates in as you can for little tasks.
Any other discussion or feedback in this calendar for them, take back them, consider. Uh, next is Act twenty literacy, because Jenica is not, thank you, Lindsay.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay.
Uh, because Jenica is not here, would anyone consider making a motion to postpone to the December board meeting?
Um, December Cal or December Board.
I'm gonna pick this, I wanna.
Which agenda seems to be more amenable to act?
Two sets of policies.
Yeah, no.
And then communication update and then.
Yeah, so yeah, but that's why I said board instinctively, I was like, I know we're looking at.
It looks like she bought the. What she into already?
She bought a pilot.
That was, yeah, that was.
But it has to do with this.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, is there a motion to postpone to the December board meeting?
December twenty?
We're not gonna prevent anything from, cause again, she already bought it, so.
Prevent.
Anything.
I I didn't, this is a discussion item. So there was nothing in here for us to.
No, it was gonna be just more of an overview of like some of the requirements out of Act twenty.
Yeah.
But there's not like an action we have to.
So here's what I, yeah.
No, it's not an action.
My suggestion. Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to postpone to the December twentieth regular school board meeting, item five D, Act twenty literacy.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Okay, so there's a motion to postpone to the December board meeting in a second. Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Why are you asking?
Cause it's discussion. Cause it's no action.
Discussion, okay, you don't know all the. Yeah, I just, I guess, I have some like, um, just based on her summary, I think. That we may have like questions just related to current curriculum.
Right.
And stuff that I would want, that.
I mean, it is.
But I'd wanna discuss.
Okay, I was gonna say it would be possible to do January.
Just do the. Something to look for. All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye. Right, motions carry, all right, we are moving on to future agenda topics, so if there's time for anybody who has something they want. That's to consider for a future agenda item.
I would like to propose by May, uh, one agenda item for next Cal meeting.
Yeah.
I understand that there's been some uh, work to identify uh, additional strategies or consultants. Uh, uh, to address, as I was moving to, uh, our budget process. And what I would like is a discussion or action, uh, item at that Cal meeting. To address possible court, uh, possible courses of action, uh, that we need board room for, if something should come up. Between now and then in the discussions.
Uh, Andy's referencing.
Even know what you just said.
Uh, crime B is, you know, i- i- is, it's not, if they can, I mean, it doesn't work, but I guess that.
Why don't I tell you what, what I would propose as the agenda item, so, um, which I've been talking to, uh. Some people at WASB about as we like work through this like sort of budget process, calendar and like. That, um, for feedback and just support and I've talked with Roger Price and Ben Niehaus and Roger Price, who's. Uh, finance veteran superintendent, you know, the WASB deal, um, has offered to. Uh, sit down with us, ask some questions and just like review our process and and let us know if there are areas in which they could support board or administration. Um, we're gonna meet with them between now and December sixth and on December sixth, that's the Cal, right? I'd like to be able to bring back information, like to let you guys all know like what we've discussed, what are some possible options, what are things we could be doing. Um, with them, I know like there's also WASBO, um, the second director of WASBO is someone whose name is floating, I know Lindsay actually. Does things with WASBO already, so kind of just pulling that all together, like what are we doing, what else could we do? And then presenting that to you guys and having a discussion about that.
So a presentation of outside summaries of potential.
Like the WASB, WASBO can support boards and administrations around financial planning, around budget planning, around communications, around budget. All of it. And so, just trying to clarify what we're making a motion for. Well, it's not a motion, I mean.
Well, I mean, the motion is put on the agenda, uh, you know, to.
And I've already told them I would do it, so.
So it's not even necessary.
So I, but but we wanted it to, yeah, be public facing and let, let's say, this is what we're doing, so it's not, it's.
So is it sharing around potential collaborations to support budget processes, something like that?
WASB and WASBO. Board and administration, yeah.
And I have a bigger interest than just one. Future agenda item, you know, space to kinda communicate, you know, my interest in that. And, you know, and to make sure that that's kind of publicly stated that some of the board's working on, um, and and to commit to that, you know, cause of action. On the other hand, and listening to uh, Matt President and understanding that there is this work behind scene. I also trust that those options are being brought to us, uh, in time, you know, uh, should they, uh, foment. So, uh, I'd make my motion, if no one wants to second it and most and uh, on it, I will not take that as insult.
Trying to clarify what the business was. I would second. Okay, all in favor, please start it. I mean, I already said it.
Yay.
Andy needs a win, Andy has a win.
You know what, I'm gonna take it all the way to Washington, sorry.
Did you wanna put forward your discussion?
Yeah, did you want, I mean, I also, I can just sort of.
I, yeah, sure, my, my, I would like to discover, have an action item next. Meeting on whether or not to form a finance committee, however we define that committee to be.
Or formalize our discussions on finance in some manner.
Yeah, we just need to notice that we're having.
I'll second it, but I do have a question. Um, and that is, it it just occurred to me, and I don't know where we are in the state with our uh, policy updates. But, um, do we even have a policy on standing committees right now?
Oh, yeah, we have one in place.
Yeah.
Because it's where WASB work.
Okay.
Sorry, I was gonna bring up a different topic.
And we also have, I mean, we can break out a committee from the committee of the whole, I think, for our current policy.
And we can just do that formally too, right?
Yes, we have, we have flexibility, we can create a task force, if we have an ad hoc committee, create a standing board committee.
Well, I'll second it because I think it's a worthy thing to talk about and we probably shouldn't be creating too much into merit of one way or the other right now, so.
Yeah.
Um, I'd love to see it on there.
Okay, we don't really need a motion, I'll, I'll put it on there. It's all gonna. Well, okay, Ben, can I, can I follow up with you about whether it's a Cal or board meeting discussion? Yes, once we start looking at like how we're gonna.
I'll just note it.
Uh, cause if I had a choice at our Cal, I'd rather fo- fo- focus on a substance of. We're having rather than get un-un. And I divert it into a discussion of committee structure.
I also think that our, our substantive conversations at Cal might inform what you would be suggesting. Like if we would put it to the written board meeting.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll, if you're flexible, we can follow up, that's what I would say. Put it on that again.
Um, and then I don't, I just, just so, so the policies that we're bringing to Cal. Um, include the five full series on finance.
It's finance, so it's timely.
Oh, all the budget stuff? Nice.
Yeah.
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 And we'll get those to you well before Cal, so you can.
Cause today I finally saw the nineteen-year-old. Budget policies that we currently have in place.
Yeah.
From two thousand four. Our latest updated budget and finance policies, I will take care of that.
So, that's why the scan didn't wear out.
I found it on microbeach.
We're so ahead of.
Can't do it. Oh, well, I moved to.
German, no, no. Pause, no, we're doing this, it's been there. Is there a motion, we're gonna have a motion adjourned and then there's gonna be discussion, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second.
Oh, I thought if someone seconded it, it's.
All you have to do is tell me one thing that went well this meeting or one thing you'd like to improve.
I love the new table setup.
There you go.
I'd love the new table structure.
Uh, you cannot repeat.
I can?
Really?
Hold on, I love that everyone loves the new table structure.
Okay, good job, Andy, do not say table.
I thought the table structure allowed us to talk more easily with each other.
I think the table structure can be improved by making it more round instead.
You're out of order.
Three. But also, I think this mi- meeting went very smoothly and we were all very collegial and very open to each other's ideas. And I really appreciate that about this current board.
I'll try harder next time.
I think what went well is that eight o'clock and we're forty minutes ahead of schedule, so we were efficient when I talked.
What?
We did eliminate an agenda. I love the humor in this room.
Can I add that one of the reasons this meeting went smoothly is because we're all engaged before the meeting. Can I add that one of the reasons this meeting went smoothly is because we're all engaged before the meeting. Participation matters outside of the the meeting, right? Yeah, so we're all, you know, yeah, we're all here, I love it. I did have a question, and this was back because I have functioned frankly from a calendar, right? And my calendar has to represent the amount of time that each item is dedicated to, I feel like in the district calendar, we're represented as.
Every time.
And please understand I have just. So I'm just wondering if too. I do feel like we pretty much run it through hours, right, and so I guess. I'm sorry, I know that, I know it's a little, you know, but I.
Thank you, Carla. You guys are all.